If I could have everybody just standing for one moment. Tomorrow is 9/11, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence and remembrance of it. So, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Needles, can you take a roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baaco.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker. Commissioner Guardioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Lisa Catania.
Michael Pierce.
Myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. Just need to make some brief announcements. Tomorrow at 7:00, down by the pond, there is a 9/11 memorial. It starts at 7:00, if anybody can make it. It should run maybe about half hour to an hour. Half.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Okay. Tomorrow.
7:00 AM tomorrow night.
Tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM. If you can make it out, that'd be great. We also met tonight and last week in executive session to discuss various litigation and personnel matters. Again, we are streaming live on Facebook. The dial-in number is (571) 748-4021. Again, the number is (571) 748-4021. And the code that you enter is (225) 124-740-pound. Again, the number's (225) 124-740-pound is the code. So, I'll give it a minute. See if we have anybody from our streaming who'd like to call in. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, would you like to make a public comment?
No, I'm here to listen.
Okay.
This is Sheila Whitehead. I'm here to listen.
Can you star six to mute, ma'am? So that way you would cut down on the background noise?
Okay, there really shouldn't be any, but.
Well.
Star six.
Yes.
Does unmute?
All right, let the record show there are no citizen comments from our streaming. And at this moment, I'll take citizen's comments for people that are in the audience. Anybody from the right side of room would like to come up and speak? Just for the record, please state your name.
Hi, my name is. Can you hear me? My name is Betsy Barnes. I'm the librarian at Upper Chichester Library. And I just want to thank the commissioners for all their help with the library. And I just want to let you know today is the library's 19th birthday. Thank you, thank you. And, you know, we are still growing strong, even though we are just. We are not allowing the public into the building because of our, you know, because of the guidelines with the State Library Association. We do have curbside service to help. To help the patrons. We are, you know, giving, finding books that people want. People have been thanking us for being here. And, you know, being open. And we are supplying virtual programs. Ms. Pam has Storytime, Live Stream, FaceTime on Mondays, Lap Reading. It's a new program, starts Monday. Also, for parents and caregivers, live stream, so they can always go back on our website and watch it a couple of times. My grandkids, you know, watch her all the time now. So Mulvahill has a virtual Zoom book discussion, which is very popular. The Yellow House is coming up, October 1st is the book by Sarah Broom. We have the Book Club in the Bags, where you can come and get the books. We have extra copies. I also have some really good news. The library applied for the Delco Strong Nonprofit Grant. And I got notice yesterday that they're going to award the library $25,000. So, that's like very nice news, especially, you know, since we're closed. We had to, I'm looking at installing a Dutch door. So, you know, we can open the door, like come wintertime, the top side, and help people. You know, maybe when things, the guidelines change, we can let people in. We have mobile print service, which is very popular. People can print from their smartphone. They come up to the door, they print their documents from their smartphone, or from their home computer or laptop. So, it's very popular. It's a great service to the community. So, I just wanted, you know, to thank you for your support, and I'll be submitting my budget tomorrow, George.
Thank you, Betsy, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy.
Anybody else from the right side of room would like to come up and speak? Anybody from the right side? The opposite, left side, my apologies. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Mulvahill, and I'm the president of the Friends of the Upper Chichester Library. And I want to thank all of those who bought a ticket for our raffle. Despite the COVID situation, the Friends made $1,200 in six weeks to support the library in its efforts. And as a Friend president, I actually have to go into the library, because that's where our files are. And I have learned how important this place is for the community. And how important for the underprivileged people who do not have their own printers and things, and need to have their resumes sent and try to look for jobs, that they have the service of the library to do that. Because there's no other place in this community where something can be fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Trader. I live 2,300 block of Douglas Avenue. And the motion I'd like to see you guys look at is free COVID testing set up here. Particularly in light of, since it's a house on my block that likes to get pool parties, where there's no distancing, and no mask wearing, and any of that. So, if you might, you know, consider something like that, it'd be nice.
Thank you, Mr. Trader. I believe the CVS is giving free testing at the moment, but that might be one possible avenue. But, you know, the board can discuss to see if it's possible to do something up here. Is it Rite Aid? Rite Aid, thank you. Any other comments? All right, if there are no other comments, we're going to move on to our regular meeting. Can I have the approval of the minutes from the August 13th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. The following motion will be read by Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Going to read a National Preparedness Month proclamation through the emergency management. Whereas National Preparedness Month occurring annually in September since 9/11 creates an ideal opportunity for every resident of Upper Chichester, Pennsylvania, to join citizens across the United States in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including national disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency announced the 2020 National Preparedness Month theme of disasters don't wait, make your plan today. And whereas planning now before a disaster is the best way to improve community recovery from disasters. And whereas when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. And whereas Upper Chichester Township Emergency Management partners with federal, state, local, and volunteer agencies to educate individuals on local hazards and how to prepare for them. And whereas Upper Chichester Township Emergency Management coordinated with the township's Communication Department to inform individuals how to take action through its emergency preparedness social media marketing campaign. And whereas the residents of Upper Chichester, Pennsylvania, are urged to plan ahead for disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in neighborhood preparedness activities. Registering their contact information in the Delco Alert Mass Notification System and visiting the emergency management page on the township's website at upperchi.org for such essentials, preparedness tips, and information. And now, therefore, be proclaimed that we, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township, does hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Preparedness Month, and calls on all private organizations and the people and the businesses of Upper Chichester to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together to create a stronger, more resilient community. So moved.
Thank you. Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Second proclamation that we have tonight, recognizing Delco Arts Week. We read that from Commissioner Olver.
Delco's Art Week proclamation, whereas Delaware County is a county rich with culture, and we are blessed with talented artists and performers who contribute to the artistic and cultural fabric of our community. And whereas Delaware County's Arts Consortium formed in 2009 includes representatives from over 50 Delaware County art organizations in strides to advance the economic vitality of the arts community and promote the value of Delaware County's cultural resources to the local community and beyond. And whereas the arts and cultural organizations in Delaware County contribute approximately $64 million and 918 full-time jobs to the local Delaware County economy. And whereas members of the Delco County Arts Consortium will hold their second annual Delco Art Week, October 3rd through the 10th, 2020, to showcase the arts in Delaware County and engage and introduce community members and visitors to the many artistic venues and experiences that Delaware County has to offer. And whereas Delco Arts Week will feature more than 75 different performances, exhibits, workshops, concerts, tours, and other events taking place in 50 venues throughout Delaware County. And now, therefore, be resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chichester Township, hereby recognize October 3rd through the 10th, 2020, to be Delco Arts Week. And we encourage residents to enjoy and explore some of the events planned showcasing the artistic talents in Delaware County. So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. The next five motions will be read by Commissioner Joe Baaco.
Consider a motion authorizing the township engineer to prepare and advertise the bid for the Colonial Drive COVID repair project.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Next one is, consider a motion authorizing the township manager to send a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to Kenneth McLean of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the inclusion of property items in the Bethel Road and Mill Road Roundabout Project.
Motion in a second, are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to send a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to Kenneth McLean of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in reference to safety concerns at various intersections on Larkin Road during the construction of the Bethel Road and Mill Road Roundabout Project. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, are there any comments from the board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise the request for proposals for a consultant to complete a tax incentive program.
Question, is that the RFP? Okay.
All right, there's a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing addition expenditure up to $75,000 for the completion of the Public Works Garage Project.
Second.
So motion in a second, are there any comments from the board?
They, I know what they're trying to do, we're trying to complete this before the winter and everything. And I've said it a couple of times on record here about the COVID and our budget, but they're scaling back for next year on any projects or?
This was going to be in next year's budget, and they moved it into this year. So, it'll be out next year. Correct, George?
Yeah. So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. The next three motions, I believe, will be read by Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Consider a motion entering to a five-year agreement with the County of Delaware for the placement of a voting drop box on township property.
Second.
So motion in a second, are there?
Question, question, question.
Yes.
Five-year?
Yes.
They plan on doing this for five consecutive years? Not just this year? Have we decided what township property?
Go ahead.
I just, I don't like it being a five-year contract.
I agree.
That's the only thing I don't like. I mean, I didn't expect it to be five years. I understand what's going on right now with the COVID, and everybody wants mail-in ballots and everything, but for five years, I don't think we should commit for five years. It should be year-to-year basis.
So the topic at hand, just to bring our audience up to speed. The county has asked us to enter an agreement to place a drop box. They have 50 drop boxes that they have purchased, 49 of them, they have 49. One would go in each municipality, and then one would be located at the courthouse. So, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Baaco and Commissioner Rakowski. I don't want to enter into a five-year contract, and I don't feel that this is necessarily a secure way to vote either. So, so we can take a roll call?
So, I have a comment.
Sure.
Your opinion about the secure way to vote is irrelevant. A five-year, I don't think, I think a five-year agreement is just that. It doesn't mean that they're going to require it for five years. It's that they don't want to necessarily have to come back each year to have this agreement signed. I don't, I don't know that it's going to be for five years, right? George, did they add any additional language? I can't specifically recall.
So that's, that's how I read the contract, that it was a five-year agreement. And I do think it's relative, relevant about whether or not this is a secure way to vote. That's, might not be relevant to some, but it is to me.
I'd like to add a comment as well. I think that, you know, this is the trend, and this is where it's going to go. Where more people and more people are going to vote by mail. And with the problem that they had in the spring with the mailing system, and the fact that the Postmaster General appears to be taking sorting machines out of the post offices, et cetera, I think this is an alternative that can be used at this point and going forward. And I think it's going to become more prevalent.
I mean, think about it, five years, this board may not even be here. And the board that's at the county right now may not be there. And the other thing is, I agree with what you're saying about now, but it may not be two years, three years down the road. If that's the case, let them come back to us.
What is the board, what is the makeup of the current board have to do with a ballot box for the residents? It's not just about the five of us, it's for accessibility for the entire township, so that residents have the option to drop their ballot in a box. That is, that's more, that's, that you need to consider more than just your personal feelings, which is why I made my comment to you, Commissioner Guardioso. This is about the entire municipality and them having access to drop their mail, their ballot in the box, as opposed to, like, the thousands of dollars that the county wasted by sending pre-addressed stamped envelopes that people couldn't even return because they got to them so late. So at this point, you don't have to put it back in the mailbox. They get it, you take it, put it in the drop box, and then you're done.
Well.
Right, so I personally vote in person, it's not an option for me.
Right.
But, you know, for those seniors that don't want to go to the ballot box, but want to drop their ballot in the, in the box, there needs to be a place in every municipality in Delaware County for those residents that need that service.
Didn't they have, well, they had that at the last election, they had a box, because they came out so late that you were able to put it into that box.
That was inside, right, it was a black box that was inside. That was an option, but now they've got a grant, so they weren't purchased, it was through a grant, and they got 49 boxes. And with that, they're going to be outside, surveillance camera, so that people don't have to go during certain hours. It's supposed to be accessible to the public. So whether someone's there or not is the idea.
Yeah, the problem in the spring with having the boxes inside the polling places is you were not reducing human contact. And anybody that knows me knows that I'm at the polls 14, 15 hours on Election Day. And because of the situation with Kevin and myself, I am a senior citizen, and I have a heart issue. You know, I didn't want to be at the polls, I did not want to expose myself. Now, that doesn't mean I wasn't there, like, for three or four hours, but the fact remains that I didn't get my mail-in ballot until Thursday. And I was very reluctant to put it in the mail, because I felt that it would not get back to the county in time. So I had to go into the voting area, which exposed me to anybody that didn't feel like wearing, that wearing a mask in the polling area was important. And this is a way to reduce risks to seniors and to encourage people to come out and vote.
I made my public statement, so there's a motion on a second. Mr. Needles, can you take a roll call?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
As a solicitor, perhaps we could make a suggestion to the, to the contract saying that it could be removed based on mutual agreement?
There is a statement in there about mutual agreement.
Well, yeah, I didn't read the.
There was something in there about a mutual agreement. They moved it. I think Commissioner Whitaker was accurate, that they just don't, this is going to be a continuing thing. They don't want to have to come back and resend out 49 second contracts. That was my understanding of it. But I don't think that it's not necessarily legal opinion, that's just, that's what I understood they were doing and why they were doing it for that.
Right, but there is a sentence in there where it says where you can contact, you know, there, the attorney that's associated with this, and/or the designated township official at any point if you want to resend that, resend that.
It's in there that we could just resend the?
Is it in the package, George? Where's it at? Right, you don't, it's, exactly.
So you're saying table it for a second?
Okay, the next item is, consider a motion appointing the voting and alternate voting delegate to the 2020 Pennsylvania Municipal League Virtual Conference.
There's a motion in a second.
Don't say, do we have to name them? Okay.
You still want to do it?
Yeah.
Ed. It's a nomination, and this is a nomination for Commissioner Whitaker and Ed Rakowski.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
But you have an out.
Again, you know, I believe it's not a secure way to voting. Anybody can walk up and drop two or three in a box, they can hold the envelopes tight. I just don't, and it's not, that's just not my personal feeling, it's my constituents' feelings also. So, a yes vote is in favor of it, a no vote is to not accept the agreement. Mr. Needles, can you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Baaco?
No.
Yes.
No.
Since there's an out in it, yes.
Thank you. Okay, consider a motion authorizing, I'm sorry, consider a resolution committing to equity, equality, and justice in Upper Chichester Township.
Question. This is the resolution that came to us?
Yes, it is.
Couple weeks to Black Lives Matter one.
Last month.
I would, I would like to move to table it, if I could get a second on it. Only, I mean, only reason is I'd like to meet with Antoine, because it's a.
Okay, so let me stop you. Let me stop you for a second. This is not about.
Can you please let him, let him finish his statement?
No, let me stop him, because it's not. No, let me stop him, because it's not about Anton.
Yes, yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Wait a minute. That's what is out there that's coming back to us.
Okay, well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm correcting you.
And that's why, why can't I go have a meeting with them? I mean, last week, it was from the original one, from Concord Township to this one, to another one. I think, I would like to sit down with them. That's all.
Why don't we form a committee?
Well, before we-
That's, that's-
Can I, I'd just like to make a comment. I know, I came up with the alternate draft resolution. I sent it out to the board last night. I think this draft is more, more representative of what our township is. It represents everybody. That's what I believe this draft revolution, this draft that I'm proposing, it's just for discussion tonight. It's not to vote on. I'd like to share it with people in the public, sit down and talk with them also, but I agree with Commissioner Rakowski and I believe Commissioner Baaco that we should table this and have a-
I'd like to table, form a committee and come up with a draft that everybody has a little input, and hopefully we can work it out. The big question is, a lot of people are questioning whether it's, doesn't support, you know, the police. So, I'd like to see a committee formed, you know? I'll be part of the committee. I mean, and we try to write one that everybody seems to agree with and move forward with it.
So, and I'll go back to my comment, that I was trying to say, excuse me, Joe. This was presented by residents in our community, okay? I don't know what discussion is out there in the community. The residents are in the audience right now. This has nothing to do with Anton, okay? I heard that last week at the end of the meeting comment was made. There was no, no one mentioned anything about Anton until one of the commissioners here last week. This is not from Anton, either from residents, from the community that are here in the audience, okay? This was sent to our manager for feedback, and we changed up a lot of this stuff. I saw the other one that was from Anton, and this is not that resolution. I don't think it needs to, I don't think it requires a committee to come up with a resolution. If you had feedback on it, which we presented last month, you could have sent your comments in and said, hey, I would like this in it, or I think this is too much, or we've been, we've had it long enough for you to provide feedback. We don't need a whole committee to schedule meetings to talk about this. It's not that difficult.
It's starting to create tension, and that's what I want to say.
Why can't we talk with them? And because-
It's not, talk with the residents. Talk with the residents.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The residents last week explained it very well last week.
Right.
But the conception is, and we said it last week too, is defund the police, this, this and that.
And no one said that either.
I didn't say they said that last, last week. What I'm saying is, when you watch the news and you see all that, everybody's thinking we're defunding the police. That was not the question last week. I give credit where credit's due last week, the explanation of Black Lives Matter, but we're also not just talking about black lives, and I like to sit down and talk with them. They say it's all lives also.
We're talking about, we're talking about black lives. All right, let's be clear.
Why can't you talk about all lives?
Let's be clear. No, let's be clear. We're talking about black lives, and we're talking about black lives because black people are the ones being murdered, okay? We know. It goes, it goes without saying that all lives matter, right? We all matter. We're all human beings. We're the human race. We all matter. That goes without saying. But what the issue is, is that people like me are being murdered in their homes, on the street corners, right? So, they're being murdered, people that look like me, okay? So, we're trying to bring attention to the fact that our lives matter too. That's it. Our lives matter too. And we know that there are racial disparities all across this country. Racial disparities in, in how many times a black person is stopped by the police versus a white person stopped by the police. There are so, there are very, there, there's studies out there that show that information. So, all we're saying is, is that our lives matter too, not taken away from the police. I sat up here and talked about the police and how our police officers do an excellent job. You know, nobody's talking about defunding the police. No one said anything like that. You're bringing in outside media information, you know, that is irrelevant to what we're talking about and what's in this resolution. We're not talking about any of that. So, let's focus on what the community brought us, right? What they brought us here, and not outside information that, you know, is, we're trying to keep that out because a lot of that stuff is negative. We're trying to talk about what's happening in Chichester and how the residents of color feel here and what they're asking for, you know? And if you want to meet with people, meet with the residents that presented it, not someone that doesn't live in Chichester, not someone that's running for office that we didn't even talk about in this. We're talking about the residents from Chichester, Upper Chichester.
So, you-
Okay, go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Okay. I think this resolution is particularly important right at this time because of the issues that Nicole has brought up. And I think that we could certainly, it was certainly brought to my attention last night, that we could certainly broaden this to include a whole lot of other minorities and a lot of other elements of society. But I think this addresses a current issue that's in the, in the minds of a lot of people right now. And that's why I would support it, and that's why I do support it.
Okay, well, I'm going to just repeat what I said last week, you know? I carefully read over the resolution, and I said that I agreed with most of the language. There was some language in there that I just did not agree with, and that's why I came up with this alternate draft, you know? I'm being, the core of the black lives movement matter is they, they do want to defund the police.
No, they don't. No, they don't.
No, they do not.
No, they do not. No, they do not. Yeah, don't, don't even, yeah.
I understand that you got, I understand that our residents that came up here stated that, that they do not want to defund the police, and we have a great police force. And I believe you guys. But the language in there about the black lives movement, I've done my research. I went on the websites. I've looked at it. I can't, I personally, I cannot support that. And I, you know, that's how I feel. So-
So, can we just take a vote, please, and then move on, on this resolution? And then if you guys want to get together about another one, welcome to. I want to vote.
Well, I did, I did present another one.
I don't have it.
I emailed it to the whole board.
I didn't read it.
I have a copy here for everybody. I was speaking, Joe. I understand it. No, we both started speaking at the same time, and I like to finish. Thank you. I have a copy here for the board, if they're so interested in reading it. And I will give a copy. If I have semester copies, I can give it out also. Mr. Pierce, my apologies.
So, the current posture is that there is a motion and a second. I understand from what I'm hearing that there is a request to table. The request to table takes precedent over the current motion, only to the second, the second.
I second it, then.
Mr. Rakowski motioned it. Mr. Baaco seconded it.
So, we're clear. Commissioner Rakowski asked for a motion to table, and there is a dispute, so I would ask whether or not there is a second to Commissioner Rakowski's motion to table.
I second his table.
So, a motion to table with the appropriate second takes precedence over the current motion. Therefore, the appropriate is time to vote on the motion to table.
There is no vote when you table it. Once you do a second, it's stable.
We said the vote.
We're going to, we're going to vote, Ed.
Motion to table has to win three votes, correct?
Yes, yes, vote's the table, and no vote is not the table. Mr. Needles, take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Baaco?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitaker?
No.
Commissioner Guardioso?
Yes.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Neary?
Motion the table carries. Thank you. The next motion will be read by Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
One second, please. Okay, this is to consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners for 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 24th, 2020, to review the contents of the fire started provided by the D C E D. This would be held at the 452 building, and this would be with the committee and the Board of Commissioners and the State of Harrisburg.
This motion is second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the offer from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to purchase in summary of just compensation in the amount of $9,400 for the project 060159, claim 2300982000, right-of-way of .114 acres and a drain easement of .196, I'm assuming acres, of the property within the tax ID number 090001590-31.
Second it.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a resolution authorizing the president of the Board of Commissioners, Michael Guardioso, to sign all documents relating to Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, claim number 2300982000.
Second it.
This motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the offer from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to purchase in summary of just compensation in the amount of $50,700 for project number 060159, claim number 2300976000, right-of-way of .643 acres of the property within the tax ID 090001036-32.
Second it.
This motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Consider a resolution authorizing the president of the Board of Commissioners, Michael Guardioso, to sign all documents relating to Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, claim number 2300976000.
Second it.
This motion is second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise a finance committee meeting for 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 17th, 2020, in regards to budget.
Second it.
This motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the trash refund list 2020-9 in the amount of $1,352.40.
Second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the resignation of the elected tax collector effective September 30th, 2020.
Second it.
This motion in a second. Are there any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we send a letter to Ms. Riley, thanking her for her service.
So, duly noted, and I am in agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise for applications for the tax collector position. So, move.
Second it.
This motion is second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $661,293.79.
Second it.
Motion in a second. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Thank you. I'll read the next one. Can I have someone consider, can I have someone to consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor to intervene on behalf of Upper Chichester Township on the zoning hearing for 3,300 Market Street?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Consider a resolution authorizing the release of escrow funds to Mr. Patel in the amount of $3,770.50 for the preliminary final subdivision land development plan.
Second it.
This motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Have someone to consider a resolution, a resolution authorizing the release escrow funds from Bada Group Incorporated to A.J. Jorick Incorporated in the amount of $24,309.70 for the site improvements at the Cates Glen Development.
Second it.
This motion in a second. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Just one comment about our motions. Wasn't there, sending our solicitor to the zoning board, there was another matter that we wanted you to represent also? Oh, that one's authorized?
That's $2300.
Correct. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our commissioners and professional reports. We'll start with our professionals, and we'll start with Mrs. Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. It's available for anyone who would like to review it. Just a few things that I think the residents should know. We have A.F. Damon coming in to do the road program. We got the information and sent the 329 approval for liquid fuels use to PennDOT today. We will probably be seeing A.F. Damon at the end of the month, end of September. That's our, our potential schedule from, from A.F. Damon. The authorization for the release of funds for the Cates Glen was actually for the restoration work that was to be done as part of the Cates Glen project that included paving. We are substantially complete on that project. I'll have a change order and the final invoice for you next month. Otherwise, I can just tell you that we've been very busy throughout the township lately. We'll have, the zoning plan is in drafting, so we'll have that completed. I will add the two parcel, or three, excuse me, three parcels that were approved today, so that we're not doing it a third time, and we'll have that for you shortly. That will be put up on the website. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for our engineer?
Yeah, Lisa, this, the memorandum you gave us, is that? It says WSFS. Is that Wells Fargo?
That's Wells Fargo, yes.
That's what WSFS? That's my bank, I'm sorry. It's a new bank that's coming into Upper Chice. I apologize. Yeah, you had asked me to, they had, if you recall, asked for a waiver of the SADO because it was solely for ADA improvements. So, I put together, based on the plans, plans are here if anyone would like to take a look at it, the various things that are happening with that plan, and the reason that I told them that I felt that it needed to go through land development. In particular, there's changes to the driveway. The ADA is minor compared to some of the other things that they're doing. They're actually reducing a lane in the entrance driveway to the drive-through. So, I think it's important that, that the planning commission and, and the professionals take a look at it before it gets approved.
Thank you. There's none of the comments for our engineer. We'll move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a detailed report in your packets that I submitted. There are no additional action items required for this evening. As you can see from the 21 matters that are listed on the report, it's been a pretty busy month here as well. Everything is in order, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for our solicitor?
One quick question, Mike. Any correspondents from Somerset yet?
Not lately.
Okay.
Not since the last update.
Kind of a shared question. Lisa, did you get my email the other day about easements? Are there any other easements that we need other than?
No, there are no other easements, and the drawing, I can't find. It's in the system somewhere. It's up in the cloud somewhere. But I thought I said send it to George. I'll have to check. I'll have to check.
I just need a bigger copy. Fine, that's all I need.
Yeah. I apologize. I meant to send something back to you. I'm apologizing a lot tonight. It's been a long week.
Mike, you have any? That's it? Okay. If there's no more comments for our solicitor, we'll move on to our commissioners, commissioners' report, and we'll start with. You want to go, George? Go ahead.
All affairs are in order. We've been extremely busy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our commissioners' report. If there's no comments for our township manager, our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Baako.
All the reports are on file. I just wanted to add that the people in the third ward have been saying my speed sign moved around, and I think we're going to hit it Burdette Drive next, and if anyone has a speeding problem, get ahold of me, and I'll see when I can get it there. So I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Baako? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you. Please, anyone. So September, the recreation, we had rentals at the field house here for six rentals, $6,016. Community service building, re-rental, $875,000. Outdoor movie had to be rescheduled for Fury Road and the Twin Oaks Park due to the rain, except the rain had gone a month of August. So they have been rescheduled for September 13th here at Fury Road, so that's this Sunday, and then September 20th at Twin Oaks Park, and they're both, I believe, at dusk, and they're all weather permitting. There's also an adult-only movie night that's going to be at a date. I have to do it. It's on our official page, it should be on the website, but in October, can't remember the date off the top of my head, but in October, we'll re-advertise that for adults, so that should be interesting. So. It's not going to go. If not. Not adult film, adults, a couples' night. Thank you. It's a couples' night. For couples only, so to leave your kids at home. Thank you.
Nobody read that one, Brian. I was like, wow. Not to be missed that.
So the rec is open, rec center here is open Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We have volunteer hours, two hours and, two hours and one debt, looks like volunteer hours. The brands that we're working on. So let me ask a question. George, last week, the field house fee waiver, is that not ready? Is that why it's not, wasn't on the agenda?
It's not ready, the first.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The community service, Dr. Johnson's proposal, that's going to be next month as well? Okay. All right. Then what I mentioned earlier, Commissioner, I also mentioned earlier that September 11th, tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, there's a service down the hill for, in commemoration of September 11th. The couple brands that we're working on, pending an outcome of the active transportation plan, a walkability brand in the amount of $20,000 was submitted on July 1st, July 5th of this year. We're currently working on an application for recycling and dumpster grant with DEP that estimated award would be in the amount of $31,000. That application has not been submitted yet. That's all I have.
You might want to add Brian needs more cornhole teams.
Oh. How many? Yeah. Okay, so there's a cornhole competition. We're looking for teams of two to sign up. I believe that starts.
Next Friday.
Next Friday, yeah. September 18th. So September 18th, cornhole, anyone that's interested, contact Brian here at the rec center.
How much is, how much is that a team? Is that fifth?
Not sure.
I believe it's $20 a team.
What'd he say?
Sorry, $50.
$55.
I like to 20, I like to 20 better.
You can, and I think you can have more than two on your team in case somebody can't make it one week. You can alternate, like you got three people, you know, it's.
We have, we have flyers in the lobby for that, as well as being posted on social media. Commissioner Whitaker, I just also wanted to, I'm not sure if Brian had a chance to tell you yet, but he did have the fingerprint scanner serviced in the gymnasium, so he's trying to work out a program that would allow us to expand the open rec hours. You know, obviously, there's some constraints of how many people we can have in the gymnasium at a time, so he's working on some ideas, and it was based around being able to, you know, obviously, track, track who was here.
Thanks for that.
Just to add on Mr. Needles' last comment about the fingerprinting, I believe we're still accepting photo IDs for acceptance to come in to use the township also.
The servicing for that was to try to come up with a process for us to be able to expand those hours.
Right. But I want to say if somebody wasn't give, if somebody doesn't want to give up their fingerprint, they can show an ID to get in and use the gym. Just want to make it clear.
Correct. Right now, you do not need to use the, just trying to come up with a system for the future.
Is there any questions for Commissioner Whitaker? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Thank you. The fire marshal's report's in your folder. We've been very busy for the month. I did have it here somewhere, but I got so many papers up here, but number of incidents just in August was 95 for the Upper Chi Fire Department now that they're running out of one department, averaging 14 members per call. So that seems to be helping a little bit with the membership response time, and everything's quicker. That's the goal for, for the DCED study that we have in September 24th, and I would put another reminder out there for that meeting that if you have any questions that regard this study, if you could write them down and the page number, so we're not going through 205 pages that night, if you have any specific questions you want to ask regarding the study itself. And had a consultant came up with his study that's September 24th, and also on the emergency management team, they did have, on that National Preparedness Month, and I think it's already out there already, a couple of them, there was a four-week process that was put on the webpage for us, week one, two, three, and four, on preparing for disasters. Their safety vests are ordered, I think they're in already, and they also participated, which the township is starting a storm sewer plan in for the township with the department heads, emergency management, the fire department, the engineer, any of our problem areas with flooding. We got lucky tonight so far, I haven't heard, heard any rain, heavy rain tonight, so it's been pretty quiet. Other than that, and the ambulances will have their quarterly report for us for next month. George, I'll get you the paperwork for the budget tomorrow.
Any comments for Commissioner Rakowski? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe all of the financial documents are available at the township building at the office, as well as the tax collector's monthly report. The police report is also available at the township office for review, and George didn't mention it under his report, but I would ask you to look at that payroll agreement and give him any feedback in reference to that. It would be a help, and it would, it looks like it would be a savings and maybe a little bit more robust system.
Any questions for Commissioner Neary? If not, we'll wrap up with my report. We went over pretty much zoning tonight. We did receive an email last week about the petition for 2908 Larkin Road. I believe that's in Mr. Neary's ward. They're asking for a variance for a pole barn. I think the maximum allowable is 900, 900 square feet, and the pole barn that they're going to construct is 11,000, oh, excuse me, 1,104 square feet. So I don't know necessarily if we need to send, if we need to oppose that. I think, you know, that's something that the zoning board can, can handle, not unless...
Yeah, I drove, I mean, I drove past, and it's just, I think it's just replacing the existing structure, so it's covering the same amount of area that it was. It's already in nonconformance is what it looks like to me. My question is, is that considered a land disturbance? If they're, so they're, I think if we do this, if we, we might want to tell them or advise them or have someone look at it and say, you're also going to have these things to look at when you come in, because, I mean, if, if it were me, and I'm not a builder, but if it were me, I'd be just throwing it up and thinking, well, it's, I'm not disturbing anything.
So the license and inspection department, when they come in for their zoning permit, they actually give out that information at the applicant. So they got it before they even went to apply for the variance.